Good afternoon, everyone. The March 11 meeting of the Henrico County School Board will now come to order. First up is the approval of our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for today's meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Consella. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The agenda is approved. At this time, we need to enter a closed meeting for a discussion of matters covered under item A8 of section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, pertaining to consultation with legal counsel pertaining to an actual litigation requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel specifically regarding DJ et al., the Henrico County School Board et al., where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. Is there a motion that we move into closed session for that purpose?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are in closed session. Draw my gavel. Is there a motion to certify that only those items detailed in the agenda for closed session were discussed?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Consella. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Closed session has been certified.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. The first item I have is our Health Committee update, as is customary at each of our meetings. And so Dr. Tygen's coming forward. I see Mrs. Gilbert's always with us as well, as usual, and we're pleased to have them come forward and provide the latest information related to our Health Committee's work. Dr. Tygen.
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. I appreciate this opportunity each meeting to update you, our staff, and our families on the work of the HCPS Health Committee. It has been a busy several weeks with the return of even more students to in-person learning. This week, we welcome back our 7th, 8th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students, completing the return of students pre-K through 12. The last two meetings of the Health Committee were focused on sharing new guidelines from the CDC and the eventual adoption of that new guidance by the Virginia Department of Health, reviewing the HCPS COVID-19 health plan to identify changes needed to reflect this current guidance as well as practices, updating the committee members on the plan for first and second vaccines, discussing the impact of athletics on in-person learning, and discussing the updated Health Updates webpage. Let's dive into each of these focus areas and the new CDC guidance shared two weeks At the March 1 HCPS Health Committee meeting, this was after our last school board meeting, the Virginia Department of Health informed me and Ms. Gilbert that the VDH had yet to adopt the new CDC guidelines, and they were still relying on the 14-day timeframe and five levels of community transmission. It was not until last Friday that we learned that the VDH had adopted that guidance, and so they also provided some clarification to previous guidance they had provided. And we'll go through that today. As shared two weeks ago, when referencing the new CDC guidelines, the core indicators are the seven-day total of the number of new cases and the percent positivity. That is now in alignment with the VDH. The decision matrix includes four levels of transmission ranging from low to moderate to substantial to high, and takes into account the level of impact of transmission within schools. The VDH has also provided additional guidance, or rather clarification, around community transmission. And let's look at what that means for Henrico data that goes back to March 6. This is the most current data as it's being provided each week that goes through Saturday of each week, and it's usually posted by Tuesday mid-morning. As you can see from the graphs, the number of new cases and percent positivity are decreasing sharply. The total number of new cases per 100,000 persons from February 28 through March 6 was 116, and the percent of positive PCR tests during the same time period was 5%. All in all, this is very good news. So let's transition to the decision matrix and see the new tool shared with schools yesterday. The transmission levels listed across the top row of the decision matrix for school reopening and phase mitigation mirror the CDC guidelines shared at the last school board meeting. The transmission levels, again, you will see range from the blue, which is low, up to the red, which is high. You will notice, though, the addition of the first column, which relates to the level of impact to a school. The indicators to consider when determining the impact of level include the three secondary indicators that were shared previously. So they've combined those on this matrix. The first index is the transmission within school, and so it runs from low to medium to high, and is based on the number of cases as well as outbreaks within a school. The low level, there are zero or sporadic cases with no evidence of transmission in school. Medium level, there are two outbreaks within a short period of time or sporadic outbreaks in schools. And the size of the outbreaks remain relatively small. And as a reminder, an outbreak just needs to be one case leading to a second case that are connected. In the high level, there are several outbreaks in schools within a short period of time. The size of the outbreaks is large, or the scope of the outbreaks is considered significant. The second indicator is tied to student absenteeism, and that's related to using the current baseline as a low, ranging up to being slightly above baseline as medium, or well above baseline as high. And the third indicator is related to staff capacity. Again, as we've shared previously, this is rather subjective, and it deals with being able to keep operations at school working. So it's related to teacher absenteeism, substitute fill rates, and it can go from where the normal level is, is low; medium is when we start to feel the system is being strained; where high is when it's getting critical. So this information was shared with divisions yesterday as to how putting this all together at this point. And, you know, while the indicators we've seen before, really looking at how those apply to the new in-person learning, we have more students that have been coming in over the last three weeks. And so I have not shown these indicators today as they apply because we're still trying to establish baselines with the number of additional students coming in person. And so here you're seeing the low impact and medium impact versus the low, moderate, substantial, and high transmission. And this is continued on a second slide here so that it would be able to be read by people. Here's the high impact, and it explains exactly what the impact is on schools. And so that's the new decision-making matrix that was shared. And so here is Henrico County's seven-day timeline data on March 6 that indicate that the new cases are at high transmission, and the percent positivity is at moderate transmission. While in the past, we have averaged the two different transmission levels and would have said we are in about the substantial range, the VDH is now indicating school divisions should be using the higher of the two different transmissions level. Thus, our overall transmission would remain in the high level. Over the next two to three weeks, again, staff and student attendance data will be reviewed to establish our new baseline levels. We will then be able to more accurately determine the transmission level using the revised decision matrix. And we also know, again, current student enrollment levels are fluctuating daily. In addition to monitoring guidance changes, we are also assessing changes in practice as a result of the low return rates of our students. And based on the changes in guidance and practice, the HCPS Health Committee is recommending several revisions to our health plan. One of the changes impacts a few select schools as it involves the student lunch venues. Some schools have so few in-person students at a grade level that the students can actually social distance six feet or more within the cafeteria or gym. In these cases, the administrators have arranged student desks with desk guards in the common space for use during lunch. The ability to monitor the students in a larger space allows some teachers to have a duty-free lunch. And so the committee supported this change, and the plan will be updated to reflect this. There was also conversation about parent volunteers. Schools have been permitted to allow parent volunteers to assist with outdoor activities. This is in alignment with the current health plan. The committee does want to continue the conversation about when and how it is safe to have parent volunteers inside the schools. A subcommittee is engaging other stakeholders, including parents, in this discussion. There was consensus that any plan would be school-based and require the administration to determine the ability to have additional folks within their school. This work was delayed by some of the inclement weather we had. And there was a review of the face mask expectations. It was decided to provide more specific language around the number of layers needed for a face mask and the expectations about double masking. Cloth face masks must be multi-layered; thus, bandana and neck gaiters are not acceptable. It is also important to note the CDC states that masks with exhalation valves or vents are also not acceptable. The CDC and VDH are still not embracing the idea of double masking; thus, we are not recommending double masking. The last area of revision pertains to seating on buses. The current version of the health plan stated siblings would be allowed to sit together on one bench seat without the need for social distancing. This would be revised to say that siblings will be required to sit together, and this is a result of recent situations brought to light through contact tracing. While the focus for many has been on the return of more students to our classrooms, efforts are still underway to vaccinate our staff wishing to be vaccinated. So at the Health Committee, we discuss vaccinations. Our nurses continue to support the vaccination efforts at the Richmond Raceway. They are primarily working outside their school hours to support the efforts to immunize those in need within the Henrico Health District. This week, they help administer the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, which was recently approved by the Food and Drug Administration. We also have key office staff working with the Emergency Operations Center and the Virginia Department of Health to schedule new hires for their initial dose of the vaccine, as well as those being scheduled that still need the second dose of their vaccine. This has been complicated as we try to match manufacture from first dose with when there's an opportunity to have that same manufacturer for the second dose. While the number in these two groups is definitely shrinking, I anticipate needing to schedule new employees from now through the end of the school year and maybe even into the summer. The nurses continue to assist with contact tracing, and much of their time is devoted to investigating cases related to athletics right now. And so the fall sports season has resulted in an influx of cases from the community. The contact tracers work closely with school personnel and parents. One of the challenges faced has been inconsistent information from coaches, students, and parents. And while the cases seem to be from community spread, the mitigation strategies within our schools has helped prevent that spread from entering our school buildings. But the key message is students need to focus on these same key mitigation strategies outside of school. In an attempt to continue to reinforce these factors, the Health Updates page on the website continues to be enhanced. And here to show some of those enhancements is Mr. Jenks.
Thank you, Beth. As we shared two weeks ago, the school division's commitment to public notifications and reporting of positive COVID-19 cases is ongoing, dating back to last August. Anytime an individual who had been on our property reported a positive case to us, we listed that case, as well as the last known date that the individual was in one of our buildings, campuses, or offices. Since we last met here, a number of updates and changes have gone live for our employees, families, and the general public to see. For example, we are now reporting new data based on increased in-person learning, updated weekly for instruction, as well as athletics and extracurricular activities. This includes not just the number of positive cases, but also the number of contacts from those positive cases, the number of outbreaks between students and staff, staff and students, and locations where these positive cases were reported. For those who may be listening in, you can find it by going to our main website and clicking on Health Committee Updates, which is listed on the homepage beneath Hot Topics. The public reporting on our website is in addition to the school-based notifications that go out from a principal every time. Also posted under Hot Topics, we've been updating and communicating the existence of resources that include our new video toolbox, which now includes 12 short clips on the ways that schools look and operate differently. Aside from the web, these resources are being emailed and posted to our social media. Schools are aware of these resources, too, to be used additionally at their discretion. Beth?
Thank you. So as you can see, the Health Committee continues to review current practices to ensure protocols established earlier in the school year continue to address needs and maintain the health of our students and staff. Ms. Gilbert, Mr. Jenks, and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board members, any questions? Ms. Consella, we'll start with you and go that way.
Yes, I appreciate the update, especially on the athletics piece of this, because I've heard from concerned parents, really, that their concern is about schools remaining open and accessible to their children. How many, because just for those listening that haven't gone out to the website yet, how many athletic teams have had positive COVID exposure? And how many have needed to quarantine to date?
I know Ms. Gilbert was here. I think she was armed with that information.
We have had approximately, good afternoon. We've had approximately 25 teams affected and over 250 exposures subsequent to that. As we work through those, we try and get the children back into school as quickly as we can if we can exclude those and move them out of the tracer. But of course, when you have a positive player on a team, it takes out your entire team. When the team plays another team, then you have the other team affected as well. What we have been very fortunate about with Ms. Consella, I'm sorry, is that our positive cases on our teams have not resulted in any subsequent positive student athletes. So while a positive case may have exposed someone because in the nature of playing a sport, you come within that six-foot distance for that period of time, air mitigating interventions, air-good mask-wearing, air-good hand hygiene have benefited us in the fact that we have not had a linked case.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then I know that, I guess, before, when we've spoken about contact tracing before, are there different expectations for principals, IAs, monitors, and lunch monitors in terms of trying to assist and going around buildings? Because as long as they keep distancing...
Are you talking about that?
Here's what I'm asking, like, how, because my follow-up is going to be, what does it look like for our principals, IAs, monitors, and lunch monitors? Because they're going around to different parts of buildings for different periods of time, if you will. However, I've heard some concern about why are the lamp, why is the lamp staff still virtual if these other activities can take place in a building safely with our principals, IAs, monitors, lunch monitors? That's what I'm trying to distinguish. Like, do we expect any changes there?
I can tackle a piece of that particularly related to lamp. And so we have looked at that situation. Because of the unique nature of, particularly, you're talking about the elementary school level, for example, an art teacher serves all grade levels, not just one class. One of the considerations is with the number of students that art teacher or librarian or music teacher serves both virtually and in person. It's the nature of the instructional delivery that's driving the virtual piece there. The logistics of making sure that that one teacher is still able to serve during the school day, both the virtual and in-person students, we're leveraging that virtual hybrid parallel model.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I've had some folks message in and think, you know, allude to the contact tracing and our mitigation. So it made sense, they were asking, you know, why can't this happen? So thank you for explaining that it's related to instruction, not contact tracing. And that's all I had. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. And Ms. Shea?
Thank you. I'm still trying to wrap my head around this new decision matrix, and as it was new yesterday, I may just have to circle back with you later when I can process it a little more. Unfortunately, it seems to me that this makes it more fuzzy, not less fuzzy. Is that...
I would agree a little bit, yes.
Okay. It's not just me?
And I think it could be too, just because it's so new.
It's so new.
I mean, there are components that we've seen before. It's just how they're putting it together and how it's, you know, how we're applying it. So, you know, I think the fuzzier pieces going with the highest, not looking at the picture in totality, that makes it a little more difficult from my perspective.
And remind me, is this, I know the CDC and VDH have different diverging, not diverging, but different matrices right now. Which is this?
This has actually been adopted by, this came out from the VDH, but it is grounded more so in the CDC because it's, from the standpoint of it's tied to the seven-day rather than the 14-day total, and it's using the four levels of transmission rather than five. So they've really taken what they had previously and tried to blend it with the key components of the CDC.
And, yeah. So, sorry. When I look at all these and all the parts that go into the different parts, and the secondary, and the, I tried to write as quickly as I could as you were going through, I didn't anywhere explicitly see mitigation in the building, more the outcomes of mitigation in the building. Is that correct?
It's still, though, part of it is knowing that those five main mitigation strategies are still in place, those layers, you know? And then, of course, we know we have additional layers, but this is still grounded in those five key mitigation factors.
I'm going to have to process this and loop back.
I'll send you some more information that might help.
Oh, you know, I love that. Thank you, Dr. Tygen.
You're welcome.
And then when we look at the use of parent volunteers for outdoor activities, particularly for elementary school, would it be possible or reasonable to perhaps use some of those parent volunteers for recess, which could provide the teachers with a little bit of unencumbered time during the day for a restroom break, or, you know, anything else that they would usually do during lamp's time?
That is one of the things that's being considered.
Fantastic. I think that is, oh, and then my other thought was, I appreciate this new reporting, Mr. Jenks, on the webpage. When I look at it, it is spreadsheets and boxes that have the most current information. Are those cumulative by school? Like, before it was, you know, this date, a student, you know, one student, whatever. But now it's just one box. So we can't list separate instances, if you will, in the same box.
That's correct. It's cumulative because the thinking is, as the days and weeks go on, it becomes increasingly less relevant that a school had one case four weeks ago, and more relevant publicly that a aggregate number of cases has occurred at a given building, considering as well that each and every time an instance occurs, that community is also being informed as well.
Perfect. For, I don't know if this is website information, but for my information, I also, not to make anybody do anything extra, but as y'all are processing data, I think it's really important looking at, I know we have the number of student-to-staff outbreaks in there, but, you know, also understanding how many, we had, so we had one positive case which led to 12 contacts, but how many of those contacts led to a case? Does that make sense? Like, that extra piece, to me, that's evidence of how our mitigation is working, and I think that's a really critical piece of information when we look at the safety of our schools.
We can go back and look at that and see if we can add that into the...
Again, not to, I really don't want to add another layer.
It is what we know anecdotally when we say about the athletics, where we know cases that were positive haven't transmitted across to other players or come into the building. That is key information. And we know it anecdotally, but it's not visible to our families.
Yeah, because I think it's easy for others to look at that data and have it tell different, the same numbers tell different stories. And so the more that we can just communicate the true story of what's going on, you know, that our mitigation is working, or if something happens and we realize we need to change mitigation to make it work better, you know, just be really transparent with our community, with the safety of our kids.
Ms. Shea, I think that's something that we can reasonably do, and I can reassure all the board members, since February the 22nd, we have only had one transmitted case. So a positive case that resulted in another positive case.
And I think that is a tremendous statistic, and I think it speaks volumes to our mitigation and is important.
Absolutely.
So say that one more time, just so we can relish in it.
We have only had one positive case that has resulted since February the 22nd in a secondary positive case, so two cases that were linked.
Thank you. Tremendous job from your team. That's all for me.
Thank you. Reverend Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, thank you, Ms. Gilbert and Dr. Tygen. Couple of questions for me. So, Dr. Tygen, I want to ask first about the self-screening forms. I've been receiving feedback and questions regarding the effectiveness of the self-screening forms. Can you speak to the overall compliance of our families completing the self-screening tools for the students arriving each day? And if a student does not have a completed self-screening form at the bus stop, are they allowed to board the school bus?
We have done the self-screening form, too, through RICOR and through the families', you know, compliance with it. The expectation is that they are doing it every day. Do we know the level of total compliance? No, we don't. However, we also are doing random temperature checks in a building, no different than any other year where a child can be put on a bus sick, you know? And they go to school, and then it becomes apparent they're not well. I mean, we're doing other things to check for that within our schools. That same for faculty and our students.
Yeah. And I would just add to that, to make it clear to all who may be listening, and perhaps to some of the reasons you may be getting this question, it's not an expectation that you bring a new signed form every day to board the bus. It's sort of like our student code of conduct, where students sign in the beginning of the year that they agree to these rules. When they have signed in RICOR, and we also had paper forms available, this piece about the daily health screening, they're asserting that they will participate daily in the screening, sort of like they will daily follow the procedures and rules in our schools. So it's sort of an honor system, if you will, as it is with a number of pieces related to conduct in our schools and guidelines for being able to participate in things. You assert that you're going to follow those each day. But, you know, as Dr. Tygen mentioned, there are random temperature checks and other ways that we can monitor adherence to that.
Thank you, Dr. Tygen. Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Another question. Since the CDC just recently announced some update guidelines surrounding individuals who've been fully vaccinated, will this have an impact on our health plan or policy?
That's a really great question, and the answer is no. We are adhering to our health plan. We know that the guidance has been if there's people that have been vaccinated, that they can... can make, they can be together in a room without masks. We are still, all of our mitigation factors are critical, and we are still, you know, adhering to that mask-wearing as being a primary mitigating factor.
So we look at the, the fully vaccinated perspective as another layer, but not one that causes us to make a paradigm shift, if will, in policy and procedure?
Yes, sir.
All right. Another question quickly. So, thanks again for Slide 8, student lunch venues. Appreciate the information regarding the changes, but the question I want to talk about is pertaining to virtual learners, lunches provided them. With the changes to the meals distribution schedule, are we collecting access data to determine if the number of families accessing the food has decreased?
Actually, I met with our supervisor of school, of school nutrition services, our director, and earlier today, and she does not have data yet from yesterday, but she is going to get us that data. So yes, we are monitoring it.
So it'll be available, the access data?
Yes.
Thank you. Because, you know, since we're no longer offering individual day pickups and neighborhood deliveries have shifted to one-day bulk pickup, has there been any consideration with the changes to the packaging of the food and the types of food offered? For example, I've seen pictures of milk cartons provided to families that contain expiration dates within one day of pickup. And so if a family's picking up food for, say, a week for two students, the family would receive approximately 10 individual cartons, all of which expire within one or two days of pickup. That's very concerning due to the potential waste and harm this could cause in providing expired food items.
And that, what was the other discussion item today was just about the sources of our supplies and our food sources and making sure that what is put out there has the shelf life for the time period. You know, there has not been time to validate the information, but, you know, that is one thing that we are, are checking on with our vendors, because we use the same vendors as every other school system. And there were conversations prior to going to this delivery time period with our vendors, so there will be follow-up.
Thank you. And I just got one more question concerning the disparities that exist regarding access to healthy nutritional foods at each of our sites. Just want to kind of get an understanding. I've been hearing about and seeing pictures of meals provided at each site, and I'm concerned about the stark differences across the district. Some parents seemingly are receiving healthy processed items with little to no fresh vegetables and fruit, and others are receiving appropriate servings of fresh fruits and vegetables. And so the quantities also differ, you know, depending upon the school. So the question I raise is, this is a question more maybe for the nutritional department, but could you speak to how the types of foods are selected and how the foods are distributed at each site? Because I just want to make sure that, that there is no disparity, that everyone has access to the same quantity and quality of healthy food, inclusive of vegetables and fruits.
All right, and the, great question, and I'd love to be able to provide you with additional information on that. I do know that it, there are some site-based decisions being made based on normal food consumption, but Ms. Whitney is looking at how those, you know, what's being offered. There are requirements by the federal government as to what has to be included in each meal. And so there, that, that drives a lot of it, along with, you know, some student voice and choice and what they'd like to eat that fits that criteria. You know, I've heard, just as an aside, like, why not give a gallon of milk rather than 10 containers of milk? And the, the federal government won't allow us to do that, and we participate in the, in the government program, so. But we do continue to look at that, and I know we've had feedback on some of the sugar levels and some of the items, and there are changes that will be coming in the next month of, you know, it takes a little while to change vendors and get, get additional food sources, but they have been working on that. So I think you'll see changes coming in food across the county.
And Dr. Tiggen, I would add to that. That, that's absolutely right, something we continue to monitor. Not only are we looking really closely at the number of meals served, any changes in patterns and data related to accessibility, it's something we want to be really mindful of. But, you know, I do want to just reiterate that every meal we serve in every school has to meet the federal guidelines for the nutritional program, and it does meet those guidelines for a balanced nutritious meal, you know, as defined by our, our federal lunch, breakfast and lunch program. So we, we are meeting those requirements. The variances may be some site-based, and so we're going to keep looking at that and gathering feedback, and we appreciate those who have brought that to our attention, and we'll look forward to following up with more detail.
Thank you, Dr. Tiggen. Thank you, Dr. Cashwell, for that. Look forward to doing that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Ms. Atkins?
Thanks, Laura.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Jenks, Ms. Gilbert, and Dr. Tiggen for this presentation. I know that our nurses have been at it for several weeks now, and they are serving staff and citizens very well. Can you share with me, how much longer do we anticipate our nurses serving in this capacity regarding the inoculations?
I know, I can share that right now, it's only based on areas, it's choice, and it's outside of their school responsibilities. They have been helping on Wednesdays when we have, when that's a possibility, and that's not always a possibility for our schools, because there are still, some of the, the limited in-person students that are still coming on Wednesdays. So, but other than that, it's their choice to work outside of their hours, contract hours with us to help on the evenings and helping on weekends.
That's correct, Ms. Atkins. We, on Wednesdays are days that were virtual, as in tomorrow, we're half-day. We have many of our nurses that are coming to the raceway after their students leave the building tomorrow to complete their contracted hours as a school nurse, but giving shots. Some of them will be staying past those hours to work on, on an evening shift as a volunteer situation. But on, on Wednesdays, we are committing outside what's going on in, in our buildings to supporting the raceway. Now, we look at each individual school and take each child individually, and if we have a medically fragile child at a school or an increased need at that school for that nurse to be there, then that nurse is there at the school. That is her first priority.
I think it's really critical that the priority is our students.
Absolutely.
And outside of that, we're, we're still supporting the community efforts towards immunization.
Taking notes. Do we have any nurse vacancies at this time?
One, yes ma'am, at Glenley Elementary School.
Y'all need to hear him get that field.
Believe me, Reverend Cooper, we, we are working on that. We are working hard on that.
Are there any aid positions, nurse aid positions that are?
Yes, ma'am. We continue to have about 23 aid positions available.
What schools are there?
Ms. Atkins, I would have to get back to you on that. I don't know that I could quote those to you right off the top of my head, but I would be glad to send that information to you. Yes, ma'am.
No, that's fine. If you could share that with me, I just want to make sure that it stays on the radar, that our nurses are doing just a phenomenal job of doing their job within schools, as well as, you know, providing their services outside of the school. But we also want to keep our, on the target on these vacancies that we have, because we want to get to a place where we get our kids safely back in school. And when that happens, we also want to make sure we have adequate staff. So I just want to make sure that, that stays at top of mind. So thank both of you for answering those questions. I look forward for the additional information, and that's all I have.
And if I may add, take this opportunity to say, we do still have those aid opportunities out there. So if we have any parents or anyone listening into the board meeting today who's interested in helping out at a school and supporting our students as they come back to face-to-face learning, we would more than welcome your application to be able to talk with you.
Any other questions, board members?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, and I also echo thanks to Dr. Tiggen, Mr. Jenks, and Mrs. Gilbert for the presentation. The next item that I have for the board is I am seeking your approval of a previously shared policy revision, shared the revision for your review at a former meeting, and now I'm seeking your approval. And this is for revisions to policy P-7 dash 09 dash 006 class ranking. And this is to bring our policy in alignment to reflect, reflect updated practice in alignment with the code, and that is Virginia Code 20 dash 131 dash 91, as well as to align with our strategic plan, Destination 2025.
And any questions or discussion on this policy? Dr. Cashwell, do you know if there were any questions or comments from the general public that people understand the change?
I don't believe that we received any.
Okay, all right, carries. All right, so do we have a motion to approve the revisions to policy P-7 dash 09 dash 006?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Goncella. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Shea. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The policy revision is approved.
Thank you to the members of the board for your approval of that policy item. Next, we are pleased to be able to bring you a presentation on, and I'll put it this way, sort of where we are now with our learning program, where we're headed into summer, and a look into what our plans are for next year, as we are ever mindful of the unique situations the pandemic has presented in relation to best serving our learners. And so we've had an opportunity to talk big picture about our plans, but this is going to give you a peek behind the curtain, if you will, or a deep dive under, to many layers of planning that have gone into efforts for what we're doing now with our learners, what we're planning for summer and again into next school year. And before we start, I want to acknowledge this team of folks out here. When I say a peek behind the curtain and a deep dive into just some tremendous efforts to make sure that since the very start of this school year, we have never wavered in our commitment to making sure that we're meeting individual student needs. And that has always been a complex challenge, but now more than ever has been complex, and they have all risen to this challenge in a way that I am incredibly proud of and so thrilled that they're going to be able to highlight some of our current work and our plans for future work. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Dr. Hughes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Ogburn, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. As Dr. Cashwell said, I'm Leslie Hughes, and I'm the Chief Learning Officer. With me this afternoon are staff from the Divisions of Learning and School Leadership. Together, we will present the board, as Dr. Cashwell said, with an overview of the expansion of in-person learning, 2021 summer programming, and a look ahead at the school year 2021, 2022. As the board may recall, Dr. Hinton provided an update on January 28th on the Destination 2025, the Division Strategic Plan. The work outlined in today's presentation is directly aligned to the strategic goal, achieve academic excellence by transforming teaching and learning to provide engaging, learner-centered experiences for all students. At this time, Scott Thorpe, Director of Elementary Education, will provide highlights on the expansion of in-person learning.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes, and good afternoon. On February 22nd, we welcomed pre-kindergartners through second-grade students whose families opted for in-person learning for the remainder of the school year. And then, on March 1st, one week later, third through fifth graders, as well as sixth through, sixth and ninth graders, returned to their schools for in-person learning. This past Monday, seventh and eighth graders and 10th through 12th graders returned to their schools. As we look at the expansion of in-person learning, it is important to know that we have many students who opted to learn virtually. So how does this impact instructional delivery? We have teachers who are teaching fully virtual classes, others teaching fully in-person classes, and others teaching a parallel hybrid model, which has the teacher instructing in-person and virtual students simultaneously. Due to staff accommodations, teachers may be virtual and providing instruction with the assistance of a classroom monitor to a class of in-person students. Shown on the screen is an overview of the percentages of teachers delivering each of the models that I just shared. As evidenced by the data, more teachers are teaching with the parallel hybrid model than any other delivery model. This is true at the elementary and secondary levels. Now that you have seen the various models being used in our schools, Mr. Dussault, Director of Teaching, Learning, and Innovation, will discuss how teachers know where their students Now that the board has heard an update on staffing and delivery models, let's take a closer look at what teachers utilize to determine how students are performing. No matter the challenges or circumstances this year, staff has pushed forward the work of the strategic plan to ensure Henrico has a balanced assessment platform in place. Pre-K 12 specialists, like many of our teachers, got creative in the various ways we could embed assessment opportunities within the curriculum to enhance instruction and gather additional data to drive student needs. The partnership between current assessments and the newly acquired digital resources have helped construct an enhanced instructional roadmap for staff. This roadmap guides the work to close gaps and enrich the curriculum where appropriate. Let's take a closer look at the variety of instructional checkpoints teachers have used this year to guide and inform instruction. As teachers utilize and share student progress in various formats, it's important to know the purpose behind the various tools and assessments used in the classrooms. Understanding why we are collecting the data and how we've used the results has been crucial this year to identify where additional intervention, remediation, or enrichment was needed to support instruction. On the slide are brief examples of diagnostic, formative, and summative data which compromised our balanced assessment system. Diagnostic data helps teachers identify the starting point for instruction. Fontis and Pennell data, for example, helps teachers identify the appropriate reading text level to ensure just the right amount of rigor for individual students. Formative tools are used for the purpose of immediate feedback and to allow teachers to adjust instruction in real time to meet the immediate needs of learners. For example, these can be as simple as an end-of-class exit ticket for mastery of a concept, or reviewing the latest data points from a particular digital resource to gauge the instruction modifications to implement the next day. Finally, summative assessments are used for the purpose of determining overall mastery of a skill or specific standard within a given duration of time, such as a teacher-generated test at the end of a unit, or the culminating presentation of a project-based learning task. To parents, our most important stakeholders, it's not so much about the educational jargon used on this slide, as it is the two most important pieces of information that comes from it. How is my child performing, and how do you know? The various data opportunities above are by no means an exhaustive list used by teachers since the start of the year, but they do provide the roadmap used to gauge the next steps for that intervention, remediation, and enrichment. This balanced array of assessments and data points are always important to focus on for discussion to ensure a strong partnership between school and home. And by using a wide variety of data points throughout the year, teachers have been able to gauge the progression of our students and where they are performing. Only when these assessments and data points are pieced together over time, are teachers able to share a complete representation of where a student is performing. In the fall of 2020, pre-K through 12 teachers were provided an opportunity to add additional digital resources that were aligned to our curriculum. The sampling of digital resources listed on the slide is by no means our exhaustive list of the new resources or data supports. These particular resources have been game changers in terms of identifying strengths and weaknesses to provide data to drive our instruction within the classroom. Much of the overall data from the digital resources has been shared with the board in the form of a first and second quarter update. Based on divisional and site-based data, there is evidence that utilization of these resources with fidelity has translated into academic success in the classroom, especially in our virtual learning environment. As real-time data is reviewed, teachers have adjusted their daily or weekly instruction. In partnership, central office staff has adjusted professional learning and provided additional resource support. At the February 25th board meeting, staff acknowledged the lines of communication relating to data and academic progress should remain open and constant between our teachers, students, and parents. Utilizing digital tools, various assessments, screeners to identify students in need of support or enrichment, has been an ongoing process in this collaborative partnership between school and home. The Division of Learning in partnership with the Division of School Leadership will continue to work at bringing additional clarity to our teachers and parents. our teachers and parents regarding our various curriculum resources and balanced assessment system. At this time, before I turn the presentation over to Ms. Candace Wilkerson, Director of Elementary Education, I'll pause for questions on the expansion of in-person learning section of our presentation.
Okay, and just so you know, board members, we're going to stop a couple of times. This presentation is long, lots of questions. So we're going to stop a couple of times to allow you to be, it will digest the information as we go. Ms. Atkins, we'll start with any questions thus far. Reverend Cooper?
No ma'am.
Ms. Shea?
Yes, thank you. Also, just thank you for the team for printing this for us. I'm a visual person and it has been super helpful. Mr. Dussault, I'll start with you since you're up here, and then I'll work back to Mr. Thorpe, if that's okay?
That'd be fine.
I'll go backwards. I really appreciate you pointing out that there'll be additional clarity brought to our parents and our teachers on how these curriculum resources and balanced assessments are being used. I know I fielded a lot of questions about that, which are beyond my level of detail, and so I know I've shared them with you and I appreciate your help there. But I think, you know, the community as a whole will, you know, appreciate more assessment around there. And I just want to, for a point of clarity, after the February something-
Twenty-fifth?
-board meeting, when we talked about maps not being offered this year, I know quite a few parents shared, I don't know if frustration's the right word, but concern that we didn't have a growth measure. But can you tell me, are these softwares and these, this balanced assessment program, are we able to measure student growth this year from them?
Yeah, we absolutely will be able to do that. And depending on the product that you're looking at, we can look at it in ranges where we anticipate a student would have been at the beginning of a certain grade level, to where they should be at the end of that grade level. And when you put all of those different types of products together, the digital resources, along with things like the Fanta's Pennell assessment, formative assessments in the classroom, that's that complete picture that we'll be able to share. And we're going to be very excited to share with our principals and our teachers some various ways that we're going to be able to bridge that gap between what we've got here at school in terms of progress and how we're going to be able to communicate that home to our parents.
Wonderful. And in some ways, some of these almost give us real-time growth measures as the year goes instead of a couple of snapshots.
Absolutely.
Another concern, particularly around these digital resources and not utilizing maps this year, sometimes maps is used to identify students for certain programs like gifted. And I had some parents reach out with a concern that I didn't know that this is how my student was now going to be identified for gifted and some other things. So to be clear, these digital resources are not being used as a core indicator to qualify for programming like gifted or specialty centers, correct?
You are absolutely correct. And what we did is we modified the criteria for various programs and such, just to make sure that we didn't miss anyone.
Perfect. And then, are there any plans at this time, and this might be later in the presentation, so feel free to tell me to hold off, but are there any plans at this time to expand our learning day for the elementary school students, or expand it to five days?
Are you talking about the 2021 year or 2122?
Yeah, for the current school year.
So for the current school year, we are continuing with the plan that we have in place, although we are continually monitoring the situation and taking feedback as we move along. You know, the current model that we have right now, especially on our Wednesdays, is definitely helping us to be able to go ahead and test the large number of virtual students that are at home, along with the various other things that we need to be able to take care of on those days. So for right now, we do not anticipate any changes moving forward, but again, we're always monitoring it.
And can you share just a little bit, because I know we've gotten a lot of questions about this, particularly from our elementary school families, why that slightly shortened day is going to continue for the rest of the year?
So, that's a great question. So again, you know, we still have our math and our reading, which I think is very important to point out to our families out there. But we do have a wide variety of assessments that are definitely coming up from the COGAT we're going to be using, the access testing, we'll eventually have SOLs and such. So all of those are playing a piece into the day. We also have that remediation and enrichment piece. You know, to be able to have one-on-one time or small group time to be able to close some of those gaps is very much needed at our elementary level. We've got products that are showing us that some kids need additional support and they need it in a one-on-one setting. And that's very difficult to do in a parallel hybrid type of environment when you've got kids all over.
So that's happening in the extended part of the day?
There is time for that, correct?
Fantastic. Thank you for that. And then, one question for you, Mr. Thorpe. You shared with us the breakdown of students, of teachers teaching completely virtually versus parallel hybrid versus in-person. And I'm sorry to put you on the spot here, so you need to get back to me. That's fine, I didn't get you this beforehand. But do you know roughly how many instances, I know it's more common at secondary to have a virtual teacher and then a monitor for students because of, you know, schedules and the number of teachers students have. But do you know roughly how many instances we have that in elementary where the teacher's teaching virtual and there's a monitor with the in-person students?
Thank you for that question. I know of a number, and we've been checking in with our school principals about how that's going. And it's been successful largely as a result of communication and collaboration of roles. So the classroom teacher who's instructing virtually, she or he is in charge of the planning, the teaching, the assessing, the grading, with the monitor very clear on her, his role with respect to supporting instruction. If you're asking about the exact number of cases in elementary, I don't have that information. If you're wanting it, we can make that inquiry and get that information for you.
Would you estimate it is large or small?
Small.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious. But yeah, I know, I would be really interested in just an understanding of where those instances are. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cincella?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for breaking this, the question, the questions and answers down into different segments for us, and for providing this information. And again, I'll say what Mrs. Shea said, that if perhaps you don't have the answer right now to some of my questions, please, you know, feel free to get back to me. I think I'm going to start with PE. I've heard some feedback, especially from our elementary parents, about do we anticipate, do we see any changes to PE? And I know I asked about the LAMP in terms of mitigation strategies during the health presentation, but this is specifically to what PE looks like, especially if you're in-person.
Right. And again, just to be clear on your question, you're inquiring if there's going to be a change in the model of-
Yes, any changes to the model, any changes to what it looks like.
We don't anticipate any changes to the model for physical education.
Okay. And then, let's see. I know Mrs. Shea just addressed from now till year end, if we expect to extend it to, change it to five days. You just said we do not. But I have another question about that. Do we expect to expand, perhaps, any of the in-person, the number of folks we allow back, should they want to change from virtual to in-person? I've received quite a few questions about that. Folks perhaps have mentioned, would that be available during fourth quarter?
Thank you. There are some families who have reached out to their school's principal and made an inquiry about switching from one model to another model. In the case of switching from virtual to in-person, that is case by case and as per space availability to ensure distancing requirements in the classroom. But our schools, again, are handling that case by case, and then, and then as transportation would be needed, then connecting and collaborating with transportation.
And thank you for mentioning transportation as part of that, because are we, are we, can we offer transportation to our families if they've switched, right, if there's availability at the school? Have they been offered transportation? Because I know that our transportation, you know, we had charts and numbers of students, and we planned the bus runs around who originally indicated they needed transportation. So if you could just give a little information about that?
Sure. Yeah, thank you very much, Ms. Cincella. Our transportation department is working so hard to learn about these cases where folks would like to switch as a result of extenuating circumstances and on a case-by-case basis and as per space availability. And there has been to this period of, or to now, there's been a period of time that's been required for transportation to figure out the routes, and that's in process, and they're working very hard to make that happen.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. And I'm certain that since some of that, it'll get easier for us. I mean, we did just, everyone's now just back in-person that chose to be back in-person, right? So it should get easier for us.
Certainly. And again, I think it's really important for me to mention to both sets of questions from both you and Ms. Shea with respect to transportation and changing delivery models. Again, these are, these are extenuating circumstances that parents are bringing to the school principal. It's not just they wanted to change because they now just want to, want to change. So I just want to be really clear about that.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. I've received some questions about, and I just, I'm so grateful that this presentation is letting folks know where our students are. You know, where are we? How do we know that? That's been one of the biggest things showing up in our inbox during this time about the gaps with our, with our students. So thank you for that. How is the curriculum, if we could just go over that one more time, how has the curriculum changed this year, especially in the classes that build at whatever level, to incorporate content that would have built from last spring to this year, and are teachers on pace with that content before the testing period starts, if you will, whether it's AP or SOL?
So what I think I hear you asking is, is our pacing still where it needs to be with everything that's been going on, both previously last year and getting into this year? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, and that the curriculum, that the students are able to, yes, pacing, yes, but the curriculum the students were supposed to learn is still what they're going to learn this year and what they're going to be tested on, whether it's AP or SOL.
Yeah. And again, you know, I'm not going to speak for six through 12, but I could probably speak for them. The pacing and the check-ins that we are doing have all been on, on task. You know, we had continued to monitor that through these formative assessments or these summative assessments, these checkpoints that we're using, so to speak. We still continue the process of doing some pre-testing with some of our students who have already mastered it even before we got to it. That's that enrichment part. So yes, nothing has changed with that in terms of a traditional school year where we continue to stay on. That's the wonderful part that our teachers have done at home, is they have figured out ways to keep the kids up with their pacing.
Okay. And then, since you're, so you're my testing person? Are you going to be my testing person?
I can give it a shot.
For testing questions? Okay, heard a lot about the SOLs. Heard a lot. And recently had some parents that had some questions in terms of the middle school, middle school students taking high school classes and needing the verified credit. And we provided additional, the division, not me, the division, Dr. Cashwell and her team, provided especially middle schools with additional information that made it easier for parents to understand the opt-out to the SOL, like why, or whether they needed it, especially our virtual parents who are more concerned about coming in a building to test. And I'm going to ask the same thing for the elementary, for our elementary families who are still struggling to understand why it's important. Does it, does it matter? Does it affect funding? You know, just all the questions that our principals, I believe, are fielding about, you know, why should my child come in or not come in? And I know our parents already indicated, but it's my understanding that a lot of families did not yet indicate about the SOLs. And they're asking a lot of questions, especially at the elementary school level.
Well, I can give you a brief overview of that elementary portion for sure. You know, the SOLs are really nothing more than a summative assessment, you know, just a measurement of the standards that the kids were instructed on throughout the year and how they performed. They definitely help us in the following years in terms of, you know, benchmarks for success, along with a variety of other assessments that we use. So in terms of, you know, the parents making the decision about whether to bring them in or to test or not, we know that's a parent decision. We are always looking for to have, we're always looking to have the most information we possibly can on our students, because all data is good data. It shows us something. Mr. Thorpe, is there anything else that I left out?
No.
All right.
I mean, I'm just wondering if that, maybe some of that information, or maybe I could get with someone or Dr. Cashwell, and explain exactly what I would like shared at the elementary level in response to some of the SOL questions.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that. And I think it's, you know, on the surface, we can provide some facts, but I want to honor the fact that this is a complicated decision that we've never put parents in the position of making before in the midst of so much else, right? So while some parents had opted out in the past, generally because of in-person learning, it was a part of the rhythm of a normal school year. And so posing a question to families about whether they'd like to come in-person if they're virtual learners to take the test or opt-out is a conversation we've not had to have with our parents before. And I know our administrators are doing a phenomenal job fielding that. And at the end of the day, it is individual choice. And so we would never, you know, part of our hesitation sometimes in answering that is, you know, every family has to decide what's right for them based on their circumstance. And so we can certainly outline, you know, it is a data point. It is helpful to us. It can be helpful to families and students and teachers. I know that there's some question about, well, what are the ramifications, right? So other than if you're in a situation where you may need a verified credit at the secondary level, you know, are there ramifications if you don't participate as an elementary student in that? You know, no individual ramifications to consider. I appreciate that many families are seeing the big picture. They know about state accreditation and federal accreditation, and they're thinking about things like, okay, school divisions, participation rates are measured when it comes to federal accountability. And those things are true, but I would urge our families to stay focused on their own child and their own situation as they're making that decision and not any other factors. But we'd be more than happy to talk with families, provide more information to our elementary schools as our families tackle that tough question.
I would appreciate that, and especially in various languages. Have the document translated so that all of our families, our EL families, feel supported and understand. And then, let's see, next Wellness Wednesday. Okay, so we've looked at the COGAT testing, SOL testing, remediation, enrichment on Wednesday. And I know we're learning, we learn more every day, but we've heard some, I've heard some feedback just asking for more structure to the day, in addition to can we get rid of Wellness Wednesday? And then others like it but want just more structure, more structure. And I've definitely heard from students, especially our secondary students, the whole board has, of students writing in to say how much they appreciate it, that they are, they are able to catch up, they are able to relax and de-stress. But yeah, if you could just, do we expect any changes?
Again, I'll speak at the elementary level here first, and if somebody else wants to jump in, they can. You know, we have given some very clear guidelines to our administrators and to our teachers in terms of how that day should be utilized. And really, it's that teacher's responsibility to really guide the student in terms of what that remainder of the day can or should look like for them. We've got a variety of cross-curricular opportunities out there that cross over with our LAMP. Of course, we have the ability to do testing. We have the ability to do small group, larger group, and of course, the catch-up time. And I think also, when we look at it as well, you know, with the students leaving around 10 o'clock, they still have to have their recess, their lunch, and you add that time in, there's really only but so much time left in the day for them. And we really want to maximize that time. So I think if we have parents out there that are unsure of what the afternoon should look like, they should definitely start with their child's teacher and get some clarification and then kind of go from there.
Okay. Thank you for just clarifying that we don't expect to see a change. I don't think we can say that enough in just further explaining how we use it at the elementary level or the secondary level. So thank you.
I'm going to add to a piece of that. I think this is a great question and a really important one. That's probably nuanced on a number of levels. And Mr. Dussault really covered well what the day can look like and how families who are, have questions about how the day unfolds for their particular learner, no matter the level, elementary, middle, or high. I think at the big picture, when, you know, one of the important things to remember as a school division, we've navigated a lot of uncharted territory this year, but you know, one of the complex challenges we face is we're running two school divisions now. We're running an in-person school division and a fully virtual school division. And predominantly, our students are in the fully virtual option. So we, that's our largest student body. We want to serve everyone well, no matter whether you're an in-person learner or a virtual learner. And that takes some balancing for our staff, our administration, for our classroom teachers, trying to manage- trying to manage logistics alone, such as offering the SOL test we were just talking about, has to be administered in person, being able to do that safely and with adhering to distancing. Those Wednesdays are a critical piece of that puzzle. And I could probably spend a long time talking about why some of the logistics of that Wednesday are so important in allowing us to best meet the needs of our in-person and our virtual learners. And then all of the other reasons we've talked about related to the wellness pieces and sort of that buffer day. So I think there's a lot to be considered there. And based on the logistics alone, I wouldn't expect a change in the Wednesday schedule, though we can absolutely look at the way that day is used, the way teachers are using that day, and provide more guidance, clarity, substance, whatever may be needed to make that day effective.
Great, thank you. And then my next question is around the attendance policy and how it's changed. And because I think each of the board members have heard concerns or gotten questions, and I know I've heard specifically, is it the same from school to school? How are tardies? Is there any flexibility for those students in person that are late versus the online, versus the virtual students, you know, that folks were saying, you know, they're not being treated the same way, being the in-person folks? Or if you could just explain the attendance policy and how it's changed now that students that chose to are back in our buildings? I'd appreciate it.
Sure, I'll do my best, and I may phone a friend with somebody who's later on in the lineup to provide some further clarification. But as it relates to virtual learners or those students who have continued to learn virtually, there are no changes. For in-person learning, we have start times, we have bell times at the elementary hour. That's an eight o'clock start. It's an 8:10 a.m. tardy bell. And then we've clarified that in-person learners, if you've designated to be an in-person learner, then you are to attend in-person learning. And there is a very narrow scope of circumstances in which you'd be allowed to learn virtually, and that's if there was a situation in which they needed to quarantine.
Okay. Thank you, because I really have heard quite a bit on that. And I think, oh, I'm just going to ask a question. I know Ms. Shea talked about the parallel hybrid and with monitors. And just once again, I just want folks to hear, if staff received accommodations, and this may be Mrs. Bolden, if staff received accommodations and they received the vaccine, these accommodations won't be withdrawn, correct? And then explain why, if you will, because I've heard quite a bit about teachers who have, or employees that have accommodations teaching virtually to in-person students. And I want this to be on the record for why this won't be revoked.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon. For teachers who have been granted an accommodation, the mere emergence of the vaccine would not nullify the previously approved accommodation. Now, an individual teacher is certainly able to contact the school and HR to request to rescind that, but just because we have a vaccine doesn't mean we're retracting, again, the previously approved accommodation. I'm sorry, the second part of your question, was that, why is that?
You covered it. It was, would we, as a school division, or not me, we, HR revoke it? And the answer is no. But the teacher does, the teacher does have an opportunity if they chose to rescind it.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
But we won't, and this is from, what, for the rest of the school year?
Accommodations have been approved for, at most, the end of the school year.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
That's all from me, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Superintendent, we will go forward.
All right.
Oh, sorry, my mic wasn't on. I'll give time for our next presenter as we navigate from where we are now, sort of to where we're headed in the summer is the next chunk of the presentation, and then the following chunk we'll cover, looking to the fall. But for summer plans, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Wilkerson.
Good afternoon. Parents are wondering what summer programming will look like and what support will be available for their student this summer. Summer Academy will be offered Monday through Thursday for preschool to 12th grade students. At the elementary level, Summer Academy will tentatively be held July 12th to August 5th. Summer Academy has primarily served students in need of remediation. Summer Academy coordinators will offer flexibility with attendance to meet families' needs. Beginning in July, Summer Academy will be available to all rising first through fifth grade students who wish for an in-person instructional experience. New this year is an option for the currently enrolled preschool students. It is our goal to give preschool students a head start on their fall kindergarten experience. Summer Academy at the middle school level will offer two, three, and a half week sessions. Session one will be held June 28th to July 15th, and session two will be held July 19th to August 5th. Both sessions will be held from 7:30 to 1:00 p.m. In addition, Bridge to Algebra I will begin May 25th. Flexibility will be given for all enrichment courses. High school programming will kick off on May 25th with the offering of online health and PE. Acceleration courses, taken through Virtual Virginia, will begin June 15th. Longwood University duly enrolled economics and personal finance course will begin June 21st. Other high school offerings and CTE summer polytech programs will begin June 21st and end August 5th. Morning sessions for high school academy will run from 7:30 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. Evening session hours, specific for high school seniors completing coursework to meet graduation requirements, will run from 2:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m. The CTE summer polytech programs will run from 8:00 a.m. until 2:30 p.m. All Summer Academy and CTE summer polytech program information, with the exception of online health and PE, which has already began, been communicated, will be made available on March 22nd. The registration window for these programs will begin soon after. In addition, Bridge Builders will offer family informational sessions regarding summer programming on March 29th. As a reminder, these are tentative dates for Summer Academy. Formal written communication regarding Summer Academy will be available in the coming weeks. The elementary Summer Academy will focus on literacy, numeracy, and the social-emotional needs of students. Pending staff availability, summer learning will be an in-person option. Staff and students will continue to follow the HCPS COVID-19 Health Plan, which includes the core mitigation strategies. Students who do not wish to attend any summer in-person learning opportunities will have the option to engage in independent enrichment activities throughout the summer. Parents will receive additional information regarding Summer Academy in the coming weeks. Now, let's take a closer look at the various offerings available this summer to support our current preschool through fifth grade students. Here is a look at what we have planned for our current HCPS preschool and any rising first through fifth grade students through the lens of literacy. Our in-person academy will offer targeted instruction that will focus on whole group instruction, small group instruction, and independent practice based on individual math and reading data. Preschool through fifth grade summer reading support has been designed to include engaging texts partnered with portions of Enrico's newly developed Balanced Literacy Curriculum. Students of families who choose our in-person summer learning experience will have a variety of opportunities to be a part of teacher-led whole group instruction, small group differentiated instruction, and independent practice. Students who do not wish to attend Summer Academy will have the opportunity to engage in self-guided enrichment activities accessible through the HCPS website. Math support for in-person Summer Academy will follow a similar structure as reading. Elementary students will receive daily whole group mini lessons on a grade-level standard in addition to small group and individualized practice activities designed to meet the needs of each student. Students who do not wish to attend Summer Academy will have the opportunity to engage in self-guided enrichment activities accessible through the HCPS website. Elementary Summer Academy will have tenants of the traditional school day in regards to social-emotional learning with morning and end-of-day meetings. For in-person learners, classroom meetings will provide students and teachers the opportunity to set expectations on how they will collaborate as a team. End-of-day meetings will provide students and teachers an opportunity to summarize the day's learning. Goal-setting, designed to provide students opportunities to their own learning, to own their learning and behaviors, will occur throughout the SEL lessons. Teachers and students will use daily meetup and buddy-up procedures from the Sanford-Harmony curriculum during morning meetings and throughout the day. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Dr. Champ, Director of Middle School Education.
At this time, I will share the opportunities available during secondary Summer Academy. Pending staff availability, the majority of secondary Summer Academy programs will be offered in person. Credit recovery, remediation, enrichment, acceleration, CTE, advanced placement, ACT. Pause. This better? Thank you. I'll start again. Pending staff availability, is that good? The majority of secondary Summer Academy programs will be offered in person. Credit recovery, remediation, enrichment, acceleration, CTE, advanced placement, ACT, PSAT, and SAT preparation are slated to be offered. Students needing credit recovery will have the opportunity to participate in traditional summer school offerings. For remediation, opportunities will exist for students who have passed the course and would like to build their skills in English and mathematics. Enrichment opportunities will include creative writing and content from other electives of interest for students. Acceleration courses for middle school will give students the opportunity to build skills in preparation for Algebra I, and rising ninth grade students may enroll in other high school credit courses through Virtual Virginia and online health and PE pending acceptance. Students enrolled in high school will also have opportunities to take accelerated courses virtually through Virtual Virginia, as well as participate in Longwood University's duly enrolled economics and personal finance course. Rising sixth through 12th grade students may participate in the CTE Summer Polytech Program, which is a three-week introduction to advanced career education classes offered during the school year. Rising ninth through 12th grade students who sign up for the CTE Summer Polytech will receive a half-credit towards the general elective, not specific content, upon completion of one of the courses. It is a great opportunity to try out one of the many options offered at the Advanced Career Education Center at Hermitage and Highland Springs. Some schools will offer unique summer programming via grant-related or exploratory programs to support students and their families during the summer months. These opportunities span the elementary and middle school levels. These programs will operate outside of the traditional Monday through Thursday Summer Academy schedule. Each program will have their own operating hours. The Achievable Dream Academy will take place from July 6th through July 29th. Students will engage in reading and math, as well as participate in field trips and enrichment opportunities. Power Scholars Academy through the YMCA is a four-week program that provides children with an opportunity to engage in rigorous literacy and math academic instruction, as well as a wide variety of enrichment activities. The program was created to boost scholars' academic achievements, self-confidence, and social skills. Power Scholars Academy will take place at one site in Fairfield District and host students from three sites. The Community Learning Center is scheduled to begin at the same time as the elementary summer program and will run for four weeks. Providing education, enrichment, and engagement-focused summer programming, students will participate in literacy groups, STEAM activities, and field trips. Partnerships are key to the execution of the Community Learning Center, and the summer program will operate at Glen Lee Elementary, Laburnum Elementary, Ratcliffe Elementary, and Wilder Middle School. Now, Donna Stavonport, Director of Exceptional Education, will continue the presentation by addressing summer plans for exceptional education students and ESL students.
Students with disabilities will have access to a variety of program options during the summer based on their individual needs. Summer programs will fall under two broad categories for students who receive special education support. First and foremost, students with disabilities will have the same opportunities to access any of the general summer programming as all other HCPS students. Many students who receive special education may need support in their progress toward the grade-level standards or opportunities to review and enrichment, which are in alignment with those supports provided through Summer Academy. A student's IEP team can determine if there are any additional supports or services which would need to be provided for the student so that they could participate meaningfully in those programs. Extended school year services are determined by an IEP team based upon whether a student meets the criteria established by the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act and the Virginia Department of Education. While ESY services can be provided throughout the school year, many of our students traditionally access summer ESY programs. This summer, we are again going to provide robust ESY opportunities for the students who require those supports. Students may receive individualized services for social skills, reading, math, or behavioral support as determined by their IEP team. And because of the increased flexibility we have in providing instruction through a variety of methodologies, it's possible that students may be able to engage in both the general Summer Academy options and still receive ESY support that's directly related to their disability. We're excited about the potential for being able to meet students' needs this summer through creative combinations of support that were previously not available because of scheduling or personnel constraints. Parents should work directly with their child's IEP team, teachers, and school-based administrators to explore the options that are most appropriate for their children. Rising first through 12th grade Level One newcomers will be invited to attend ESL Summer Enrichment. Students will participate in language-rich activities throughout the course of the summer school day. These activities will focus on listening, speaking, reading, and writing. The English Language Development Standards will be emphasized. These standards integrate social and academic language through all core contents. Students will participate in teacher-led lessons, small group, and independent activities, and follow the life-ready skills and attributes needed for success. A Building Bridges workshop will be held on March 29th to provide families with additional information on summer learning supports. At this time, we're happy to address any questions you may have about our plans for our summer programming.
Excuse me, Board Member, Ms. Consella will start on this hand this time.
Yeah, I guess, when I look at this, and I don't have many questions yet, just because this is new, we don't have as many details yet, but I think most shocking to me is that knowing how many of our families have not come back in building. knowing how many of our families have not come back in building, that the option is essentially in-person or virtual through Virtual Virginia or self-guided enrichment opportunities. So I really need more time to think about what that looks like because I know folks... I don't know, I just think our families, some of our students really need these opportunities that won't be able to participate in some of the special programs that you've presented today. So yeah, I just want to bring that forward that I'm concerned. And then, two, we had heard feedback, some board members, I know I heard it quite a few times, about smaller chunks of time, if you will, instead of the two, three-and-a-half-week sessions, community members, they didn't really want to commit a big part of their summer but wanted a boost. And especially, this was focused, I heard it more from elementary families, who again did not want the four-day, you know, in the past, it's been four days for three-and-a-half weeks. They feel that that's too much of a commitment, so I'm just asking if we consider, or have we considered, or could we consider, other opportunities for families?
Certainly, we can consider other opportunities for families. We've even considered maybe doing two-week sessions instead of doing a complete four-week session, so that is something we've discussed.
And I think not only for our families, but that may also help any staffing concerns that come up as to just folks needing a break this summer.
Yeah, absolutely. And Mrs. Consella, I want to make sure you know your feedback's heard, and as we shared, we wanted to give you as much information as we can to give you the best picture of what we're planning for summer, noting that the dates you saw are tentative, we're still working through some of the logistics, they are looking at how we can best chunk it, and of course, staffing is a primary consideration on what we'll be able to offer in-person and/or virtually. And so, our first priority is to be able to offer that in-person experience that many students haven't been able to have yet or need, that direct instruction, particularly students who need remediation. So we're continuing to look at that and fine-tune options, though certainly a number of the secondary options leverage the virtual more, but yes, that chunking is a big part of the plan we've brought forward.
And let me just be clear, I absolutely support an in-person option.
Yeah.
It's just the flexibility of the virtual for so many of our families who still need the enrichment and remediation opportunities.
So as we continue to plan, we'll definitely take that into consideration.
Thank you so much. That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Ms. Consella?
No, that was Ms. Agburn.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Consella. I'm thinking too, and saying too, Ms. Shea.
Thank you so much. I want to echo Ms. Consella, one note I had written, particularly for the elementary school, was to break that four weeks perhaps into two, two-week chunks, you know, as we look, particularly for students and families, like she said, that are looking for a boost, or maybe students who are on grade level and don't necessarily need an academic boost, but they haven't been in a building for almost a year and a half at that point, and so having maybe two weeks in the building to, you know, orient would be helpful. And so, and there may be some cases where students are recommended for the four weeks because they need that extra, but anyway, so just, and you know, in talking to my mom circles, my mom friends, you know, they're like, "I would really like to participate, but like, I can't commit the whole summer," you know, that sort of thing, and so I think it would up participation, but exactly like Ms. Consella said, I've also heard from my teacher friends, like, "This has been a year, like, I need a summer." And so, but perhaps if it's two weeks, we could have more staffing help as well. So I just wanted to throw that out. Just for some clarity, when you say currently enrolled pre-K students, those are for students currently enrolled in our pre-K program.
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were clear with that. For families, looking at some of the elementary offerings, you know, we have the in-person, and then we have the self-guided enrichment, which would be virtual, I assume.
Yes.
Okay, will things like Lexia and DreamBox still be available this summer to engage in and continue that differentiation? I've seen some nods.
Yes.
Perfect, so that could be another way for students to also engage in differentiated instruction to continue.
Definitely, definitely.
And then, I've heard a lot of concerns from my district after the governor made some statements about the summer. Do we foresee this being a required activity for all our students?
At this time, we have not made that decision.
It is not.
It's not required.
Unless there were to be legislation that would come forth, we are not mandating it, so I mean, I think particularly when you get into the case of secondary learners where there may be courses not passed that are needed to graduate, so that sort of thing. But this is voluntary participation in what we are offering for all students.
Madam Chair, are we expecting, to what you just stated, Dr. Cashwell, are we expecting any changes to that legislation where it might be required?
Not to my knowledge. I know that there, you know, there were some statements made at some points from various elected officials about summer and mandating summer in-person programming. I think what's important to know is that we are offering for all students in-person summer programming, and so we believe we've met the mark based on what the intent was there, and I'm not aware of anything that would mandate a student attending that in-person program.
Thank you for clarity.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's a really important piece of clarity. And then, my last question just goes with, you know, when we're looking at that secondary, and particularly that high school timeline that starts in May and ends in, those programs wouldn't necessarily run the duration of May to whatever date I don't have in front of me. Different programs would run like different slots of that, so like, I just want to ensure, so like, an AP preparation workshop, you're not going to start in May 25 and end at the end of July, that would be a smaller chunk of time.
Correct, this was just the window from when the first courses start.
Perfect, thank you so much, and that is all I have.
Dr. Cashwell, if you would take just a moment before we continue, to clarify who can participate, because that's the question I've gotten the most. If a student wants to participate in summer school to prepare themselves for the next year, they will have that option, is, that's what I've heard you say earlier, but there are going to be some students where the teachers work with the student and the family if it's especially needed, you know, like, as normally happens.
Yeah, I think it's about recommended versus, yeah, and then there's some ESY considerations, and I think that's why Donna's is coming forward, but I want to just first remind everyone, what you've seen is a tentative plan, those are tentative dates. As you see, we'll release information to families on March 22, and we'll have a parent workshop, the Bridge Builders Academy, to go over all of this, schools will be armed with information. But what we want to make clear to the board, and certainly have welcomed your feedback here, is how we are working to build the kind of comprehensive summer programming unlike what we typically offer, given the circumstances, so that it has a wide breadth of in-person opportunities for those who choose it. And go ahead.
I think you spoke to it, I believe, Ms. Agburn, that perhaps there were questions like students with disabilities who may require very specialized services that are specific toward their disabilities, they still have access to those general Summer Academy programs just like everyone else, and then they may be able to access different, very unique services specific to their disability, the same with our English learners.
Well, and I think that's the question I've received the most, is for that student who is not recommended or the student who's not excelling, that student who just the parents feel need a little shoring up before the fall, that's, I mean, I've heard that question more than anything else.
And that's what this is designed to accommodate, this summer programming.
Right, okay, just wanted to clarify and say it again. Okay, thank you. Reverend Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Dr. Cashwell, first, I want to say how excited I am that the YMCA Power Scholars Academy and 21st Century Community Learning Centers will take place in the Fairfield District, so I just want to put that plug out there. And for the self-guided activities, enrichment activities, it states that there'll be access to digital resources, but will there be opportunities for access to hard resources, printed resources, to encourage tactile learning that can be done at home? Consider tactile learning?
We certainly can consider that and take that under advisement.
And also, transportation, for those who have transportation needs, will we be providing transportation?
Yes.
What about lunches and breakfasts as well?
Yes, we will be providing transportation, and we will be providing meals.
Thank you so much. So I think on slide, what, 23, the summer programming information will be released on March 22. What's the timeline and process for families to make a decision about their child's participation in the summer learning opportunities?
Let me get back to you on the exact timeline for that.
And so, I ask these questions, understanding that these are tentative dates, so I appreciate that. I think Dr. Champ stated pending staff availability. How and when will you determine that there'll be sufficient staffing to meet the needs of our learners, and if so, if we don't have it, and are there any other alternatives that we're going to provide to meet the demand?
So I think if we consider what Ms. Consella and Ms. Shea mentioned, breaking the four-week session into two-week sessions, that'll enable us to meet the needs of more students.
Okay, so I'm assuming, once you look at that, determine that, so hopefully, our staffing needs will model what we're putting forth. I just want to make sure, if they're not met, that we do have options to kind of, to mitigate that, if you will. Then, what's the cost? Have we determined the cost yet to families?
At the elementary level, there is no cost to families.
Okay, secondary?
The recovery classes, as well as the retake courses that they take, are free, however, they will have to pay for the CTE Summer Polytech, Virtual Virginia, and Longwood University, and online health and PE.
Which is typical of any school year, because those are, if you would think about sort of an extra or an addition in accelerating your experience versus remediating it or gaining that extra. So by and large, the important part is the summer programming is free, and it comes with transportation, and we will have meal service, and then those particular secondary courses that have associated fees for advancement.
Thank you. And last question, how are we going to disseminate this to the families?
So of course, we'll disseminate it in writing and through school websites, and then Bridge Builders, of course, will be offering family sessions that parents and families can tune into to find out more information.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkerson.
Ms. Atkins?
So I want to thank the entire team. I know there's another layer of team working with you as well, I just want to say thank you. I know you have a ton of work ahead. This is just the beginning, and you have a very short timeframe to respond to a lot of families, so I want to acknowledge that and thank you for that. Can you just validate, I think I heard you say that you're using the balanced literacy approach, correct?
Yes, we are using the balanced literacy approach.
And is that going to be a new concept for teachers, or is that something continuing? Because I think it's been in our...
It is not a new concept for teachers.
All right, because I just wanted to validate that I heard that correctly, so thank you for that. Can you share with me what supports are going to be in place for summer around literacy? Other than the teacher and the reading coaches, what other supports are going to be in place for summer?
So our Division of School Learning, I'll let you come forward, Mike, will be providing trainings for teachers, but I'll let Mr. DeSault speak more to that.
And I think if, I don't know if it's helpful, there's a visual that breaks down some of the literacy support components that might help while he's speaking to those.
So you're talking about the students, Ms. Atkins, correct?
Well, I'm talking about both, but in particularly teachers, and I know they have gone through a tremendous amount of training already, and we're talking about summer, and we're going to add another layer of training, so I'm not so interested in the training pieces, right? That's memorialized, and much of what I thought is memorialized, but what I'm really referring to is what support and mental space will we, you know, will provide for teachers through summer as they use that balanced approach, right? Because it's trying to strike a balance a little bit between the whole language and a little bit between the phonics, and so in the sort of shorter period of summer, what else is available for our teachers, teaching students, particularly some that may have not been in the building before, I think additional supports are necessary here, so I was just interested in what that plan or strategy is.
Well, I love how you just broke that down, we can definitely use you. So what we're looking at for this summer is some pre-made Schoology units. In fact, we had those ready to go for last year, and in those, we have the ability to do guided reading groups where we can obviously have students in smaller sections to work on specific skills. We also have our enhanced phonics curriculum, which we did not have at our disposal last year, and that will also bring in some of our traditional tools that we have just kicked off this year, which is Hegarty, which is our phonemic awareness. So we have a cadre of tools that our teachers have been using all year long that we have not had previously before, so this is going to be an exciting summer for us to be able to have these groups of students and larger groups of students than we traditionally have had before, to go ahead and make that progress and try to close as many gaps as we can, and I think the most important thing that we think through this is, too, that joy of reading, that needs to be a part of the summer. If this becomes an experience where children are coming in and it becomes more of the same, then you're going to get more of the same.
Right, so you are already ahead of where I'm going, and so I appreciate sort of that energy that's flowing back and forth, because I also think in part of getting a child to find the joy in reading, they have to find their purpose in it, and that's what makes it joyful. And so, my question about support for teachers is really going beyond, here's the book, here's the whole child, here's the phonics, how do we bring the joy out? And I would hope that the staff considers bringing the family in. I think that there is an opportunity, particularly with the support you just mentioned, I would hope that we share those additional supports with families, because I think families, PTAs, PT essays could be essential to a group of kids who are burnt out particularly in reading, and I'd like to bring that joy back, and I think we have a wonderful opportunity with bringing in parents to share those tools you've just mentioned that aren't memorialized so that they're aware and they can be a part of this process, so I appreciate that. The other piece my colleague mentioned around transportation and nutrition, I'd love to see an overview of what that looks like, and, you know, fairly soon. I think when we're thinking about ADA at Howland Springs, when we're thinking about our CLCs, particularly YMCA Power Scholars Academy, I'm excited about that. I know that presents another challenge around nutrition. But I'd like to see a really good overview of how that's going to work.
And we can definitely take that back to the team. In fact, we, as a Division of Leadership and Division of Learning, have been meeting with the transportation folks on a weekly basis to continually run through all of the various programs and such, and what would take to get that off the ground and to be able to meet our students and families' needs, so that is an ongoing weekly meeting, and that is something that we can definitely add to our agenda for the upcoming week.
Fantastic, and the other question is, will meals still be offered at bus stops?
Yes, yes, we will be offering meals.
Fabulous, and of course, mental health is at top of mind, always, always, for our kids, and I'm interested in what human resources are available. I guess that question could apply to the previous and where we are now, it applies with summer school, and it certainly will apply to the fall. I'm aware that we have our counselors and our teams in place, but I think a significant discussion is necessary that we do need more, so I'm very interested in the human resources that we have available to talk specifically about wellness.
I will jump in on that one. So as you saw on the presentation, we do have social-emotional learning built into the elementary curriculum, and of course, we have our social-emotional curriculum available to the middle schools and high school teachers. That is something that the actual classroom teachers would have access and available to. However, just this week, we presented a budget to Dr. Tygen, and I spoke with Dr. Cashwell about us hiring counselors for the summer that we could have available during our summer sessions so that we are able to provide counseling services to the students who are in-person, and they would also be available to students who would not, you know, be participating in the summer school sessions in-person, who might be virtual and doing those enrichment activities. So once that budget is approved, then we will move forward, and we can update you on how we're going, but that is our plan, to have counselors available this summer.
So help me understand and make this clear for me, because there is a difference between providing a human resource for mental health and creating space to be able to be in tune with yourself in order to have the reality perception and then the perception that's not reality, so I'm a bit confused with your response, so if you could please help me understand, so the responsibility of the counselors will also include the responsibility of mental wellness, is that accurate?
Well, so our school-based mental health teams... Well, so our school-based mental health teams in our school division are made up of different individuals. So our school-based mental health teams consist of our school counselors, our school social workers, and our school psychologists. And together, they make up a school-based mental health team. And any of them are able to provide school-based mental health for students, in addition to the other tasks of their responsibilities. So counselors have tasks that they engage in, such as 504 planning, they have academic and career planning. Our school social workers, in addition to school-based mental health, are engaged in attendance and engaging with families, to help families get resources. And our school psychologists engage in school-based mental health, and also assist us with our testing and our evaluation. So while each one of those individuals have other roles besides school-based mental health, their main goal is to help our students with that school-based mental health. So we have school social workers and school psychologists who are available during the summer. Typically, our school counselors in the high schools, we have 12-month school counseling directors, but for the most part, our elementary counselors are not working during the summer. So we felt it was imperative to help with that school-based mental health model. To be able to run it through the summer, it would be important to have those school counselors physically on site. Did that answer your question, Mrs. Atkins?
It does, but if you'd just give me one moment to take notes and process, I absolutely appreciate your response. I have a response for you, but let me process my thoughts for one moment.
Sure.
So, other than the psychologist, we do not have one dedicated person around mental health? Because it seems, from what you've shared, everyone has also other responsibilities. Is that accurate?
So our school psychologists, our school social workers, and our school counselors have other responsibilities that they engage in, yes.
Have we considered looking at budget and positions so that we can have folks on staff that are solely dedicated to mental wellness? Has that been considered?
Yes, that has been discussed. And if you've been following some of the legislation, some of the work that's coming out right now is looking at the ratio, specifically with school counselors, to lower the ratio of a school counselor to the student population. So in particular, moving into this school year, if the legislation passes, we should have one counselor to every 325 students. In addition, for the first time ever, some of our standards of quality are including those social workers, excuse me, the social workers and school psychologists for the first time ever, whereas before, the VDOE and legislation has really called out support staff. And as we know that our students across the state are really requiring more and more school-based mental health, some of that legislation is changing, and it's becoming very specific about the roles and the types of employees we should have in buildings. So really looking to scale, if you will, the amount of school-based mental health providers who are in buildings and who can be dedicated solely to that work.
I appreciate that. It's important to understand what we have in order to move forward, and to be clear that we are sharing responsibilities, and for me to know that we have individuals that are solely dedicated on mental health because of where we are.
Right. Absolutely.
Right? It may not have been as necessary years ago, but it's certainly necessary right now. So I'd love to see a plan. We know we have this pending legislation. I've been following it, and I'd like to see sort of a plan, which is a bit complicated because of legislation, but I'd rather us be proactive in saying, these are our desires. If we had the money, this is what we would want, and this is the ratio that we would want it by. I think in being proactive right now, suicide rates, any hospital you go to to talk about our children that have a need, you will find it is definitely necessary, and if we are proactive with a plan as a division, I think we would be well-suited to fight for what we need and what our children certainly have to have.
Yes, absolutely.
So I certainly appreciate that, and your response as well.
Yeah, absolutely. And we have a very solid plan of exactly what we would need. I was trying to give Mr. Wack a few days to get on the job before I worked with him, but yes, we have that plan, and I'll be happy to share with you.
I would love to see that. Thank you so much.
I might add one piece just related to the mental health, and I think Dr. Hughes covered your response to the question when it comes to the school model, but I would point out, one thing we're also really mindful of is typically where there are mental health concerns that might go beyond the proactive, these are important services outside of the school day, right? And so we know that we can't do it all, even with the tremendous professionals we have, and even as we expand our models, that it's important that we be in lockstep with Henrico Mental Health and service providers who provide that bigger-picture mental health piece outside of the school division. So we recognize our scope during the school day can be limited, even when we're staffed at the very best ratios. So I just wanted to point out that I know that Dr. Hughes's team that she was mentioning does partner with, and there are liaisons that work with Henrico Mental Health and other private providers for that very important comprehensive mental health approach.
Thank you for sharing that. In that partnership, we are the ones that reach out to Henrico Mental Health, correct?
I would say-
Or is it vice versa?
It could go both ways. Yeah, you know, oftentimes, a family may be engaging with Henrico Mental Health, and they would let us know how we can support that effort during the school day, or vice versa. So I think there are lots of scenarios out there, but definitely, the open lines of communication there are critical.
Fantastic. So I do greatly look forward to that plan, to better assess how I can help as a school board member, but also how I can help Sanson, Burina, and Howland Springs to better understand how to navigate the system on how to get mental health resources. I think that's pretty critical right now. So I really do appreciate you being here and helping me understand what we offer as a division and staffing that we necessarily, that we definitely need. So thank you.
Madam Chair?
All right. Mrs. Shea, sorry.
I had a quick question that was prompted by one of Reverend Cooper's questions. So we have these dates of March 22nd and March 30th, tentatively, where the summer programming information's going to be released. Signups aren't also that day, correct? So, no, okay, I'm getting a shake. So families will have time to receive the information and process it without feeling like they're Black Friday shopping and got to sign up?
Yes. Thank you for bringing that.
That's a great analogy.
It is a great analogy and a concern. We wanted to make sure we're bringing you the most information we can to give you a full picture, but not inadvertently incite panic or stress for our families. As we get the details finalized, they'll be released, time to look them over, opportunities to engage in some division-level learning sessions through Bridge Builders. Our schools often provide those same kinds of workshops, so there'll be plenty of time to learn more and find out what works for your family.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Great.
All right. Well, ready for part three.
It's sort of like we're moving through space and time here. We're where we are now, we're into the summer now. We'll take that look into the '21 school year into fall and how we're going to approach that, again, at a high level.
Well, now that we have heard an overview of the plans for summer, let's focus our attention towards next year. Over the past year, administrators and its central office staff have fielded hundreds, if not thousands, of questions, concerns, right alongside with positive accolades for the work Henrico staff has undertaken. In the words of our superintendent, "We hear you. Each phone call, email, card, conversation played a role in guiding our next steps to drive learning. Henrico is on track to utilize our board-approved 2021-22 district calendar with a return to our five-day-a-week instructional model." Let's take a closer look at how the lessons learned from this year helped develop our actions moving forward. In order to meet the immediate needs of our students, parents, teachers, and administrators, five essential action items have been outlined in response to the most frequently asked questions by stakeholders. This is not an exhaustive list of needs, but it does establish intentional actions which must be considered in order to meet the unique needs of all students. Let's take a closer look at how these actions will translate into our district plans for next year. Action item one, align teaching and learning instructional practices and resources as the main focus of the Teaching, Learning, and Innovation Department. Original plans for an aligned transformative curriculum refresh were originally designed for a two-year creation and delivery cycle for pre-K through 12. However, teams in the Department of Teaching, Learning, and Innovation began this summer with an internal audit to identify potential gaps in deeper learning, alignment of standards, social-emotional learning, and the culturally responsive education model, to give us what tenants a baseline unit should have to ensure consistent curriculum development throughout our district. Due to the immediate need for a virtual landscape, a two-year comprehensive rollout was no longer an option. Our specialist teams all worked tirelessly since last summer to write curriculum in order to stay ahead of the real-time units that were being delivered within our classrooms. These teams have not only pulled off this curriculum-writing work in this incredibly short timeframe, but have also embedded a wide variety of new tools and resources along the way. Mid-year curriculum survey results were overly positive from staff and administrators. This feedback was encouraging for our writers who continue to strive for perfection in our design, deliver, and assess curriculum development model. One of the key pieces to supporting our life-ready priorities in the fall of 2021 will revolve around our divisional pre-K through 12 Life Ready Literacy Plan. The work on this plan was initiated in the fall of 2019 and was set to launch in the spring of 2020. Despite our challenges with COVID, the basic tenets of this plan have already been initiated and embedded in a variety of ways this past year. We are most excited to share the specific details of this plan with our Henrico community at our May Board presentation. As can be seen from the definition of Life Ready Literacy, this plan is much more than just a model to teach reading. A strong literacy base helps build students into communicators, who can explore and exchange ideas with others, thinkers who analyze, generate, and build ideas, and collaborative citizens who form partnerships as active participants in a larger society. Here is just a sneak peek into some of the more pressing and timely actions contained within our Life Ready Literacy Plan, which will be presented in its entirety in the second work session in May. Now Anne Marie Sealy, Director of School Quality, will share the details of the remaining action items.
Action item two is to review student progress data collected through common assessments and other data points to plan and deliver Tier One instruction. Instructional planning for the school year will rely heavily on student achievement data and building leaders' ability to access that data easily. No one test or assessment paints an accurate picture of where a student is performing. It's only when a balanced view of these assessments is used to identify additional support or enrichment that we begin to use data correctly. Available progress data include the following. Please note, these vary by level, and this is not an exhaustive list. Site-based grade-level growth measures, such as pre- and post-assessments, four-and-a-half and nine-week checkpoint assessments, PALS in K through three, FANTIS and PENNEL reading assessment, performance tasks, local alternative assessments that will be given in third-grade social studies and science, fourth-grade VA history, and fifth-grade writing and science, digital resources, such as Lexia Core and Smarty Ants, and formative assessments, such as guided reading groups, and phonics and phonemic awareness programs. Supporting principles as they lead the school and family communities in a deeper understanding of all data points is the next step in unpacking the progress data. Performance Matters is our new assessment and analytics management system and data analysis tool. Staff are learning more about this product each day. Most recently, we discovered that additional data can be loaded into the system to create a data dashboard for school administrators and teachers. This includes data from our digital resources. Teachers will be trained on how to access this data through Performance Matters and can use it to help parents and students see a clearer picture of student progress. It is imperative that students, no matter how young, are included in discussions about their learning. The focus of action item three is to provide and monitor professional learning for Tier One instructional practices. This will allow us to establish common instructional expectations and language across all schools and at the county level. In cooperation with our Professional Learning and Leadership Department, a variety of both synchronous and asynchronous professional learning will be provided to staff to support the alignment of strong Tier One instruction. The division-wide commitment to establishing strong Tier One instruction includes an all-in approach to professional learning, where stakeholders can easily identify connections to the learning plan and to the HCPS teaching and learning priorities. Tier One instruction is the foundation for meeting the needs of all learners. By creating clarity in learning in order to empower students to their own learning, student experiences are maximized, and teachers are able to meet the unique learning needs of all students through more personalized opportunities. Each summer, the Department of Teaching, Learning, and Innovation provides teachers with content-specific professional learning opportunities. This summer, those opportunities will include a focus on literacy, implementation and monitoring of digital resources, and updates to the curriculum and available curriculum resources. And finally, teaching strategies that support the needs of our exceptional learners are important to strengthening the Tier One instruction for all students. The Exceptional Education Department will partner with Professional Learning to offer sessions on co-teaching and specially-designed instruction. Here is a closer look at a series of workshops that will be provided to teachers and administrators next year to ground Tier One instruction. These workshops will present content and build on that content over the course of the year. The work will support administrators with implementation of Tier One instruction and how to monitor the effectiveness of the implementation. The learning series will be held on the PL days identified on the HCPS calendar and will include all teachers and both building-level and county-level leaders. The workshops will feature the work of Dr. John Almerod, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning at James Madison University. Action item four is to establish, implement, monitor, and communicate a division-level process for intervention and remediation protocols and resources. Elementary intervention in Henrico County is rooted in research-based instructional approaches that are implemented around specific skills deficits. It includes regular tracking of student progress to ensure the intervention is making a difference. In a joint effort, the Division of School Leadership and Division of Learning held a focus group to review current intervention practices and brainstorm solutions to improve our process. In collaboration with district specialists and teachers, we are developing a better approach to providing intervention. The Fall 2021 Approach to Elementary Intervention will produce a large number of positive outcomes. These include classroom teachers strengthening their reading knowledge, fidelity with Tier Two resources and data, and opportunities for Tier Three support. Professional learning on the alignment of instructional and intervention resources will take place prior to the start of the year and will continue throughout the year to ensure all staff feel comfortable in their ability to deliver effective intervention. Additional details will be provided during our Literacy Plan presentation in May. While some students need ongoing intervention to address gaps in foundational skills, other students need occasional remediation to address course and/or grade-level skills and content. Remediation at the elementary level in the fall of 2021 will focus on reteaching content that students previously failed to learn. Remediation will likely be delivered after school. We will build on existing student-teacher relationships to provide activities that will further close gaps in instruction. At the secondary level, both intervention and remediation opportunities will be available to students. Teachers will have access to data from digital resources, classroom and county formative assessments, county benchmark assessments, and summative classroom assessments in order to meet students where they are in their learning. Schools will be provided with digital resources for math and reading that support Tier Two and Tier Three intervention, training on how to implement those resources with fidelity, and ongoing support as they monitor the student data produced. In order to support teams with remediation, school teams will be expected to monitor the effectiveness of remediation and how funding is used to support remediation for all students. Intervention, remediation, and enrichment may be offered during the instructional block, the middle-school advisory period, the high-school-directed study block, and/or after school. During the instructional block, teachers will provide the support to students individually and in small- and in small groups. Students will be identified for intervention and remediation opportunities from data collected through assessments. Enrichment experiences will be available to all students through their courses and other extended learning periods, such as advisory. Schools also offer a variety of after-school opportunities, which include enrichment opportunities such as clubs, organizations, athletics, and other activities. And finally, action item five. Action item five is to refine the school quality improvement process to ensure all schools are closely monitoring student academic progress. This afternoon, we shared with you four action items to address the needs of all students in the 2122 school year. But without a plan at each school to understand, address, monitor, and adjust throughout the year, improvement is merely a wish. Instead of wishing things work out well, we will use the basics of the existing school improvement process framed around the coherence model of educational expert Michael Fulon to empower school teams to systematically respond to the needs of their individual schools. Beginning in July with a deep data dive, known as a comprehensive needs assessment, the Department of School Quality will provide step-by-step support to the schools as they set up plans to monitor progress in the 2122 school year. Additional activities in the school quality process, also known as the school improvement process, include training schools to write and monitor a plan that responds to school-specific data, regular planned collaboration amongst schools with like needs, monthly progress monitoring, and ongoing professional learning as needed to support the goals and action steps of each plan. Building capacity and internal accountability for each school is an important step in ensuring student achievement for all schools. So as shown on this slide, a next step for Destination Life Ready will be to hold a family workshop via the Bridge Builders Academy. This workshop will be held during the back-to-school season of the 2122 school year. Throughout this presentation, the board has heard details about the expansion of in-person learning, summer academy, and action steps for next school year. It is our hope that you, our parents, students, and staff can see there is a clear focused path moving forward to close gaps and ensure continuity of instruction heading into the summer and fall of 2021. At this time, we are happy to answer questions you might have on the school year 2122.
Okay, round three. Ms. Atkins, do you want to start?
I do. Thank you. Thank you so much for sharing your presentation. I don't have deep-dive questions into the specifics of what you've presented, but I have noted that Bridge Builders Academy is being utilized in such a variety of ways that I think it warrants a little bit more communication about those efforts, particularly when I think about the school calendar. I would like to offer you and the team to allow Bridge Builders Academy events to be in the featured events section. Seeing that I've seen it so many times here of activities that they're going to be offering families, I think it does warrant, particularly now and probably for the next couple of months, for these activities to be featured and highlighted in that section on our Henrico County Public Schools calendar. I know it's already full. You know, you click on a date and it goes all the way to the bottom of your screen. So that's why I think, you know, consider putting this in the featured sections where it would pop up more readily. So that's just a thought.
Yes, thank you.
And that is all that I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm excited about the implementation of our Life Ready Literacy Plan and be very interested and intrigued to see the presentation in May. I guess the question that I have is that do we have or are we planning to present a breakdown of the literacy data per school from the perspective of being able to show the schools of the highest needs where additional resources will be needed and also targeted?
Sure. We can certainly put some data together for you regarding the literacy levels at each school.
Thanks, I appreciate that. And also, within the literacy plan, are there opportunities for parents and guardians who need help, who are struggling with reading and have deficiencies in literacy themselves? We do know that data suggests that parents and guardians, their reading skills is one of the greatest determinants of their child's future academic success. So I'm hopeful that we have opportunities for training skills, building for families, so they'll be prepared to provide additional reading literacy support to their children at home.
So I'm going to let Mr. Dussault answer that since he has spearheaded the literacy plan project.
Thank you.
And Reverend Cooper, you're spot on with that. Part of the literacy plan is what's my role, whether you are a teacher, whether you are a counselor, whether you are a principal. Everybody has a role in this literacy plan, and for us to be able to build that culture of life-ready literacy that is just beyond learning how to read, everybody's got to be able to do their part and understand what their role is. So that's a big piece of our Life Ready Literacy Plan, so I'm glad you brought that up.
So I'm assuming we'll see some more about what the specifics are.
Absolutely.
I see the superintendent through my side view here shaking her head.
We are very excited to present this, yes.
And then the last question, Ms. Sealy. On Slide 34, action item Intervention/Remediation, where it says "offered to qualified students" or qualifying students, please forgive me, can you speak to how it will be determined which students will qualify for remediation?
Are you asking specifically for elementary, secondary?
Well, give me an overview if you could.
Sure. Mr. Dussault, do you want to take elementary, and then I'll follow up with secondary?
So part of our Life Ready Literacy Plan is really a, and I don't want to use the word overhaul because that would indicate that we were completely broken, I would say restructuring of our resources, our talents, and purposefully taking a look at how do we identify students who need Tier Two intervention and how do we support them? And most importantly, how do we track them? Because intervention is not a destination. We close gaps, we look at specific skills, and we get back into that Tier One flow. Occasionally, we do have students who struggle with Tier Two and they need another level. We are clearly identifying what that other level looks like for Tier Three, and it's only when we're able to put all these pieces together. And I know originally earlier today I heard, you know, staffing and resources, that purposeful alignment is going to get us to our goal, and we're very excited to be able to share that with you.
You know, so, okay, Ms. Sealy, you want to say your part next, then?
Sure. So at the secondary level, we are really hopeful that we will have both a math and reading intervention product that will get us started with data points as entry points for our staff to use, but we are also, of course, looking at all of the other data points. This year, we know we will have inconsistent SOL data coming from the students, which we would typically use as a starting point, but we hope to have these other resources in place, as well as the information that we have in Performance Matters with the data dashboard that is compiling information from a variety of resources about our students that we can use that with intervention as well. We recently added a member to the school quality staff whose focus is going to be intervention and remediation at the secondary level. And just looking at the system and process that we use right now, we really want something that's consistent across schools, that we can train them in a process of how to identify students, how to monitor them, what to do with the data when they have it. And we have a cadre of secondary specialists that are experts at knowing what to do with that data. And so we hope from the level of from the school quality department to really put something in place that operationalizes that across schools. And knowing that intervention and remediation are different, we'd be looking at different processes for supporting the schools in identifying students and monitoring them in those.
I appreciate that. This is kind of a dualistic question. Say, for instance, a family, a student has received a passing grade in the class, but they feel that in order to better prepare them for going forward, that they need remediation. They may not have fully mastered the certain content of this subject or course. Can they request it, and will we provide it?
So that's something that we're looking at through summer programming, what options would be available for that. But individually with the classroom teacher, I think that's a great conversation to have of, you know, what are the skills or content that are missing or lacking or need some strengthening? And those are things that teachers address through small group in classrooms, that they may address through, like at the middle-school and high-school levels, advisory and directed study periods, where you can group students according to their needs. So those are all opportunities that we have outside of the regular instructional block that we might be able to work, well, that we can be able to work on those gaps with students.
Well, that's good to hear because it's important. You know, I just, I'm going to take a little personal privilege, I guess. You know, we talk about reading. For me personally, I'm just talking about me personally, this is a very, very imperative, important point. One of the most transformative statements that was told to me younger in my life was that third-grade reading scores determine prisons, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So when we talk about this whole school-to-prison pipeline and trying to dismantle it, you know, everything is correlatable to discipline and academics, but for me, this reading is so fundamental. And I want to say thank you all for, Dr. Cashwell and you all, for the intentionality and the purposeful nature that you all have. But just know that when I think of literacy, that's what is really going on inside of me, dismantling this school-to-prison pipeline. Preparing our young people to be successful citizens in society and allowing them to have the ability to comprehend, to be able to read, to understand, to problem-solve, to creatively think. And so I'm going to really be waiting to see the plan, looking at the plan, because I just know that this is so important for us to dismantle that pipeline, so.
And I agree with you. As a former English teacher and English specialist, it's near and dear to my heart, so I'm very excited about the literacy plan that we're rolling out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Reverend Cooper. Ms. Shea?
Thank you. I'm going to take a sharp right turn for just a moment, and I'm going to just throw this straight to Dr. Cashwell so I don't put anybody else on the spot, but anybody can chime in.
Do I need to get back up?
No, you're good. You know, looking at this, talking about the 2021 school year, I'm going to just ask the very blunt question that has come to my inbox, and I think all of our families are thinking, what might this school year look like in terms of format?
Yeah, well, I think, as was shared previously, the administration's not recommending any change to the calendar that's previously been approved. So I know that we've received a lot of questions about would there be an advanced start to the school year? Would we be extending the next school year? Would we be changing the length of the school day? We are, at this time, not recommending any changes to that calendar that's previously been adopted. But what you saw here was how we're going to intentionally work on making sure that we use every opportunity we can to address learning gaps and the unique student needs that we know will come forward during the school year. In regard to the day-to-day schedule, our aim and our plan is for a five-day schedule that mirrors the same timeframes for the instructional day as we've seen in previous school years. Of course, none of us has a crystal ball to predict what kind of health crisis situation we may have to mitigate in the future, but certainly that is our plan moving forward.
So what I'm hearing you say is that our goal is to have a traditional-looking school year next year with possible mitigation in place as determined by health officials. And just to be clear, what would any sort of virtual offering, do you anticipate any sort of virtual offering?
You know, one of the things that we're working on right now would be something that would not be the kind of situation you saw this year where we would be offering virtual due to health conditions, but simply because it might be a family's choice about the way their child may learn best. So we know that a number of our students, you know, pre-COVID, if you will, leveraged virtual Virginia or left our school division to take on full-time online programming. One of the things that we're looking at is developing a Henrico virtual option. Of course, that's still in development. We'll look forward to releasing more details as we're able to make that possible. And this would, again, not be something that would necessarily have a teacher teaching split, hybrid, virtual, parallel, like you're seeing now based on health conditions, but, you know, students who might enroll in virtual Virginia traditionally would have that option to do so full-time. This is a traditional school year, if you will. And I hesitate sometimes to use the word "traditional" because I think we know so much more than we ever did, and so maybe there'll be a lot of elements about it that aren't traditional, if you will, other than some of the things we know about five days a week and the scheduling. I think we can do school even better than we ever have before based on the experiences we've been through.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's patience as we took that detour, but I think that's a huge question in our community's mind, just looking towards next year. And like you said, we don't know what's going to happen between now and then. We don't know what the requirements from the state or health officials will be, but it is our goal to have, yeah, five days a week. All right, now I'm coming back your way. I finished my detour. I just want to reiterate, I think maybe Mr. Dussault, no, Anne Marie talked about, Ms. Sealy talked about having teachers to be trained on how to access the data and use it to help parents and students see a clearer picture of the student progress. And I think that's so essential. I spoke about this at a board member, at a board meeting previously with y'all about making it easier for parents to access this data now that the data is really updating almost in real time and we have so much more data. It's not just that mid-year or end-of-the-year printout from a standardized test. And so really looking at how can we make that more accessible to our families to have an understanding both of where their student is, but also of what their needs might be or next things come next, or what things come next, as families look how to support their student at home and move them forward. So the more access to that data, the better. And then, you know, I'll just reiterate what, as well, Reverend Cooper said, you know, literacy, literacy, it is so key. It is the fundamental building block of everything our students do, not only for the rest of their time in school, but really for the rest of their life. And while I am a numbers gal and I love some number fluency, I mean, literacy is really just so core to everything. And so I'm excited for the May presentation, I'm excited for these opportunities to really identify gaps, where they are, and also how to best fill them. Kind of on another end of that, I know we've had students this year, as we've had those adaptive softwares that have been differentiated, that have been able to work through things at their own pace, and they may be two-grade levels or three-grade levels ahead in math and/or reading. And so are there any thoughts about how to, as we meet all of our learners where they are next year, to keep those students engaged and challenged and making sure they have relevant learning opportunities as well?
And I think that's something we really look toward when we talk about enrichment. You know, what opportunities do we have both in the classroom to offer differentiated instruction for students who are ahead and who are eager for more? But what also do we have in our advisory periods, in our directed study blocks? You know, what opportunities are there to allow students to move forward? And some of our summer course offering is going to do that as well if they're interested in accelerating. So that is something that we will continue to look for opportunities, both within the instructional block and within the other available instructional time in the school day, that we have to provide students with differentiation, really, right? So you're accessing the course or the content or the skills already at an accelerated level. How can we keep you interested? Because I think sometimes our students, they're uninterested really quickly, right? Because they get it easily, and we need to connect with them and keep them interested as well.
Mr. Dussault, do you anticipate similar opportunities at the elementary school level as well?
So absolutely. And part of our curriculum audit this year was asking that exact question. What do you do for the child who may have already mastered this before you even begin the work? So we are working towards, you know, having personalized pathways for students so that they can make some of their own choices in terms of what types of text, what types of projects that they are building. And when we talked about originally that two-year comprehensive plan, obviously, that would have given us a much longer runway to pull those together. But our teams of classroom teachers, our curriculum writers, and our content specialists continue to take best practice in talking to the kids, which ones did you like the best? And obviously, their input is helping us fine-tune those possible experiences so that every student has that opportunity. If you are performing already at a high level, what can you do to stretch your thinking? What can you do to show what you know in a different way?
Fantastic. I think next school year, in some ways, is almost going to be like a kindergarten year for everybody. You know, our kindergartners come in with a wide range of experiences and at a wide range of places with different academic pieces and subjects, and I think we're going to see a lot of that next year. And so, and sometimes our older-level teachers, you know, past early elementary, aren't always accustomed to that. It's more clustering. So I think it'll be just another reason why this work that y'all have done is so critical on, like you said, meeting each learner where they are and making, and moving each learner forward. So thank you so much.
Ms. Consella?
Yes, I share, I thank you for this presentation, this piece of the presentation, and I share my colleagues' enthusiasm for this, for the Literacy Plan presentation in May. My golly, you know, we learn to read and then we, well, we read, learn to read and then read to learn. then read to learn. And as a mom who's been extremely involved in remediation efforts over the years, I'm just super excited that we are looking at our remediation efforts and we're looking at how we can do them better to better meet the needs of every single student we serve in Henrico County Public Schools. And just knowing some of the things that I see and that I've heard in this position, I want us to pay particular attention to the secondary literacy, you know, those middle school and high school students. I mean, you know, if we haven't supported them with all the supports they needed, I just hope that we really focus on those students, you know, and not just actually with reading, but math as well, because those are two critical skills for life. And I hate to think that we could have missed anyone, but I'm not naive. I know that some students at the middle and high school level need additional support, so I want to just ask Dr. Cashwell and the team to focus on that. And then something actually that I just think is a red flag for me, and I just want us to be knowledgeable of it, even though I love the idea of remediation for elementary students, love it. I hear the words "after school," and I'm thinking, wow, just because we add additional time and we make the student read more, if you will, and practice, that doesn't necessarily equal results. So I just want us to be mindful of that, that, I mean, I love being flexible with remediation, but just after hours, kids need, kids still need to be kids and to play. So I don't know what that looks like for us, but I just want to bring that forward. And that's all I had at this time, except for I'm super, super excited, can't wait till May. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lots of information. Any more questions? Anyone? Tremendous work. You can tell you guys have not been sleeping here lately, but it's just constant work because there is so much, so much work to do with so much, so little time. Ms. Consella?
I actually do have a question, and it's probably for Dr. Cashwell, given that it's going to be budget-related. And I saw additional positions announced in the recent budget, proposed budget from the county manager. I see, there was a number of positions, and I'm thinking about all the wonderful things presented here this afternoon, and I'm thinking, do we have all the money for these great things? And now that we've addressed some of our planning for the fall, I'm very aware that planning right now is going on in our buildings for the fall. And do we, do we have the staff? Have we budgeted? Do we have money in the budget for the staffing to cover all the great things and remediation and enrichment that we're going to be providing in the fall?
So the budget, as I've shared with the board, restores positions that we had frozen during this school year and not filled, as well as supports the addition of 10 school counselors onto the future base budget that had been funded through CARES Act. So there are an addition of positions, if you will, as well as us being able to fill some positions we had frozen. As far as summer programming and what you've seen outlined here, we intend to leverage funds from this most recent CARES Act, so that would be above and beyond our base. So, you know, certainly when it comes to, I think what you're asking our needs met, you know, we're able to be able to, fortunately, through this CARES Act funding, be able to tackle that summer programming and may be able to leverage some of that funding for remediation even into the next school year. You know, that funding will be specifically earmarked, if you will, to really address learning gaps, learning loss, and all the things that come with that. So we feel that we'll be able to accomplish these plans within that budget. I know that when we think about positions and the budget I had brought forth pre-COVID, you know, we had looked at even expanding a larger number of reading specialists, for example, school counselors. So the budget that we've approved does not get us to the point of reaching those milestones, and that's something we still aim for and strive for. And so as we're able to, those would be priority budget items for staffing.
Okay, so just some of the step, maybe the staffing that's in that article, because I know I've received some questions about it, is related to perhaps holiday, right? Opening holiday staff positions?
Oh, absolutely.
And so forth. It's not additional to what?
That's right. So exactly. And, you know, so those additional FTS, and I think even some of the positions that had been frozen and were unfilled this year, when you do to your year-to-year comparison, it looks like an addition, but it may not be a new position. It may have been a previously a position we froze and didn't fill. Some new positions with J.R. Tucker having expanded capacity in '21, with Highland Springs High School and Holiday Elementary in the fall. There are a few positions associated with the expansion there.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. That's all I have.
All right, I didn't turn my mic on. Now, we, a long time ago, about an hour and 15 minutes ago, you gave a date for when we're going to have more information. I thought we might just say that date again.
Are you referring to summer programming?
Yes.
Okay, yes. So we look to release?
Not to all of this, but to the summer.
To our families, and I just want to get, we've covered a lot of territory.
We have.
It's hard to know which, speaking to summer, families can expect more information to come forth on about March 22nd, and the March 29th date is the date we're eyeing for a Bridge Builders session, which again would be, like, imagine, a community virtual event where families can learn more about what's planned. But again, lots more details for us to fine-tune before we're ready to release information. But I hope you can see that summer plans are indeed robust and would offer opportunities for all who want to take part in them.
Yeah, I just thought after all of this information, we ought to jump back to the closest dates and reiterate. So anyone else have a, before we move on? Okay, thank you. Now, we did have, our next item on our agenda is the public forum. There were written comments submitted to the board. We appreciate that those citizens took the time to communicate with us. Each board member has received those, that written feedback. And as we have been doing, we are continuing to alternate one meeting. We have written what, comments, and so our next meeting will include in-person public forum. And that is?
Yep, that concludes any items I have from.
Okay, thank you. Is there any unfinished items?
Madam Chair, I have one unfinished item.
Mrs. Atkins?
I just want to note, I would be remiss to sit here and not address how tough this week has been. And I'm going to use this opportunity to do that and speak directly to my district, Sandston, Verina, and Highland Springs. I want you to know that I am hurting too. I know that actions from our history in our country, or even in this county, or even on this leadership team, is reminding us of a lot of raw pain. And some of these things may not have healed. I know some of us have endured more serious situations, and you just can't quantify or compare emotion, can't compare pain. However, I do know that one good step is that it's okay how you feel and to express how you feel, especially when you've experienced any level of racism or judgment or insensitive acts. How you feel is how you feel. And as your school board rep, it is my responsibility to stay focused on you and to make sure that I understand the desires for your children, my children, our children, education. That is my focus. My focus to bring more resources, as many as I can, to our communities and to bring your voice to the table as your school board rep. I know that distractions or interference is this sort of natural opposition to consistency. That's the best way I can say that, because distraction and interference, all it does, all it does is hinders action, because when you're supposed to take action but you don't, it leads to confusion. And when you're supposed to take action but you can't, it leads to a lack of progress. I want you to know I have layers of focus on progress. I really do. Expanding in-person learning, doing what I can to advocate to get better in that in our areas, not as a school board rep, but as a resident. I am focused on so many more things, and I just want you to know that. I am focused even when I'm not on this stage. I am focused when the camera is on and off. My work, my service, my purpose did not start when you put your faith in me to give me this title. It will not end even when I do not have this title. And that's because I'm always fighting for us, because I love who we are and everything we represent, the different colors, the different sizes, the different shapes, the different traditions. I love who we are, and I will not stop fighting for us. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there any new business to be presented to the board? And I'll just make an announcement. Any announcements? Our next meeting is March 25th, tentatively timed at 1:00, and until then, we are adjourned.